Perfect, okay. Before we get to this evening's agenda, just like to make one announcement that due to recent resignation, we are seeking a seventh member for the zoning board of appeals. If anyone viewing this broadcast or in the audience would be interested in applying, you may file an application at the town clerk's office. The application is available online at www.reddingma.gov. Click the bottom right on the homepage where it says Boards and Committees and you will find the application. Thank you. All right. So, we will begin with case number 1110. Is zoning board of appeals, we'll hold the public hearing, okay? On petition of Eric, and I apologize, I mispronounced your name. Kalodionides?
Kalidias.
Kalidias, my apologies. Who seeks a special permit under section 6.3.8 of the zoning bylaws in order to demolish an existing dwelling located on a non-conforming lot and to construct a new single-family dwelling on the property located at 105 Sanborn Lane in Redding, Mass. If there's no objection, I will dispense with the reading of the abutters list except to say that the abutters were notified, as were the following: the Board of Selectmen, the Town Clerk, the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Building Department, Assessor's Office, Engineering Division, CPDC, Conservation Commission, Health Department, members and associate members of the Board of Appeals, and the planning boards of Wakefield, Linfield, North Redding, Stonem, Woburn, and Wilmington. All right, now, is there anyone who thinks they may like to speak on this particular matter? I'd ask you to please stand up at this time to be sworn in.
No one's presenting tonight?
No one's presenting?
Yeah.
Okay, so obviously, stand up. Yeah. Even if you don't end up saying something, it's always good to just get sworn in anyway. So, do you swear the testimony you're going to give is the truth? The answer is I do.
I do.
Thank you. And, the floor is yours.
My name's Leonard Connaughton. I'm basically the construction manager for Eric. I actually filed a petition and the application. He's looking for relief for a frontage issue. He currently has a little over 114 feet. He needs 120, I believe. We do meet a lot of requirements for square footage and we do conform to all the front, side, and rear setbacks.
Okay.
The proposal's to build a 3,000-square-foot colonial home, which would be three bedrooms, two and a half baths.
Should we start with questions? Or Glenn, do you have, I guess we'll start with you Glenn. Do you have any, anything you'd like to add or comment?
It's a typical 6.3.8 proposal to tear down an existing dwelling and to construct a new. The lot is large enough with area, but it lacks the required frontage. I don't, I don't think I see any construction plans.
Let me see if I have any.
I do have construction plans with me. I didn't realize they were supposed to be part of the application. Not just the plot plan.
Yeah, I don't think there's a necessar, you know, it's not a requirement. It's always nice to be able to look at them. It gives us an idea of how the new construction's going to be able to fit in with the neighborhood. So, it's always a good idea.
I do have a set, I didn't realize that. I could easily have done that.
Yeah, I know John would like to take a look. I would at some point.
Sure. You want?
I'd be, maybe, maybe one of them.
Through them a little bit.
Sure.
Yeah.
It's basically going to be, as I said, a 3,000-square-foot colonial with a three-car garage off the side. As you can see from the plot plan, the new driveway will enter from the side and the garage itself does side load. The elevations are basically a very traditional New England colonial. We're going to do a clapboard side and architectural roof shingle. The neighborhood itself is one that is in transition, certainly at this end of Sanborn Lane, so, you know, we think it's an improvement. There is a small deck on the back, which you can see right here. Mr. Kalidias has decided not to do that screened-in porch at this time.
Oh, okay.
That won't be included.
Yep.
It does conform, well, from a zoning standpoint, if you want to do it. I think that's basically it. There is no third or fourth finish. It's strictly two stories with a roll over garage.
Thank you. Glenn?
Well, I haven't seen any plans.
Just what we just saw right now, yeah.
Right.
But we typically require the plot plan, but not?
Right. No, the application states, and I'm sure that I mentioned it, that you need, plans are necessary to clarify your request. That's in the ZVA application.
Okay. Are we willing to accept plans this evening?
Do you have other sets of plans?
I can drop them off tomorrow. I didn't realize it. It didn't say in the application.
I'm sorry. It does say that in the application, and I know I mentioned that to you.
On the zoning application, I didn't think it was a requirement, but I certainly would have done it.
Application number 17 details step-by-step on what you have to do, and one of the requirements is to supply plans necessary to clarify your request to the board.
Okay, I misunderstood.
And I usually suggest bringing photos of the existing dwelling, so you could show the existing dwelling and the proposed, and the board can make up their mind.
I didn't, I misunderstood that, that's my fault.
All right, that's fine, but that's standard procedure.
Okay.
My understanding was, and I'm sorry, but my understanding was that we received a letter from Glenn saying that we didn't conform from the frontage. We filed the application for the special permit, and then we filed for the building permit once that was approved. So, mine, mine is understated.
That's all right.
No, you do, you do file for the building permit once it's approved, but the board has a difficult time approving something if they can't view the plans.
John, do you have a comment?
Yes, I, one question. You have other sets of plans back at the office, I assume, right?
I do, I do, yes.
Because we would like a set of, we would like that set of plans for the records this evening, so that Glenn can refer back to them.
Can you do that? Absolutely, absolutely, by all means.
Okay. Why don't you give that to the chairman, and those plans match the footprint of the plot plan?
Well, that's what you're going to find out.
Well, that's, the board should find out tonight.
Tonight, yeah.
Well, actually, the survey did it off that set of plans, so it should.
Well, this is actually what we can refer to in terms of the decision, but in terms of the layout of the house, layout of the house is going to be.
How can the basic footprint?
Yeah. But this is, this is what we're going to go off.
Plot plan on control.
Whatever.
You think this is, this is?
I don't know, I haven't looked at it, I haven't seen it. I don't know, I don't know if that, I don't know if that matches this plot plan.
Why don't you look at this as we go through the rest of the questions we have.
Side, questions.
I didn't have a far too many questions. The thing that came to my attention, though, is that it was the abutter letter we got, which had a concern about the fact that we were putting a three-car garage and the driveway was running along the.
Left side is your face, though.
Left side of the.
Yeah.
And they had a concern, or they were expressing a concern about what that impact might be, if any, on their septic system and their well water. Would you care to comment on that?
It'll be a standard gravel-based driveway with an inch and a half of binder and inch and a half of blacktop, so, I mean, it certainly won't be disruptive with respect to a well or septic system.
One other comment they made, too, was that on this drawing, which I think they were referring to, it shows that the existing well on your property is in the back of the house?
It's, yeah.
And they said it wasn't, and their comment was it's in the front of the house.
I'm sorry, the comment was that the well is in the front.
The well is in the front of the house. Now, is it in the front or the back?
The well's in the back of the house. We don't have any intent to reuse the well, we're going to go with town water, so, he may decide to use the well for irrigation.
For irrigation.
But not for, not for domestic water, no, we'll, new water.
But at 105 Sanborn, the well is in the backyard.
Are there any water issues on that property as it exists today?
Nothing we're aware of.
Either on that property or the abutting properties?
I couldn't speak to the abutting properties.
I mean, I'm talking about runoff from this one.
I would think not, no. It's quite a large piece of property. I don't think there's any issues with groundwater.
Have any more questions, please?
John?
We probably need to read into the records in the letter that we just received from the Hulses.
I figured we'd do that for public comment.
Yeah, usually that's what we do. I think we read into the records if they want a public comment.
The only question I have for the applicant is you have 17-foot setback on the proposed dwelling on the easterly side, but only a four-foot setback from the edge of the driveway on the westerly side. And we know that the setback requirements are 15 feet. I'm wondering if we can move the whole thing over one foot to make it 16 on the easterly side and make it an even five feet on the westerly side.
Absolutely.
Where, where's this, oh, okay, four feet here. I see. From the edge of driveway to the property line, yeah.
Yeah.
And it probably would.
We're doing it again.
Okay. And probably would be in your best interest to change the grading on your driveway, the proposed driveway, so that it does not go into the adjacent owner's property.
Oh, we're, yeah, we'll make sure of that.
But I mean, that, I don't think we have, we don't have that.
Authority?
Yeah, authority or purview.
I don't think so.
But I mean, that would be a problem possibly for you down the road if, if perchance you didn't and you were impacting their well because they may have a well in the front of the house. We don't know that. This doesn't tell us where their wells are. We don't really know if they have a well.
Well, certainly, he sends it to the board, by all means.
That's the only questions I have.
Yeah, I think I mirrored, heard some of the concerns already that I had. Yeah, looking at it, and I just wrote some notes here, legal, non-conforming lot because of the less than required frontage there. I think it mirrors probably, it looks like the two abutting lots are very, very similar to it, and I think probably a lot of the lots up off of that upper end of Sanborn Lane. It appears all the setback requirements have been met here, as shown on the plan, so I didn't have any issues with that. No new conformities, new non-conformities with the lot. And the proposed dwelling, based on the plans we see tonight, as they say, standard New England colonial, looks like it would fit, fit okay with the neighborhood as far as I'm concerned. That was a comment like, like John brought up. Usually we do get some type of architectural elevations or plans, and that's fine.
I apologize.
Yeah, that's all right. And this is an aquifer protection zone. It is noted on the plan, it's quite a large lot, so I think they're lucky with that, but it is noted that the proposed lot coverage, and I think what they intend when they say lot coverage is also the driveway, the shed, concrete walk, so it's basically impervious area is 12 and a half percent, so it's less than the 15% required for the aquifer protection zone. I don't have an issue with that. I know, based on the letter that we got from the abutters, and there's a copy here, you probably didn't get it, so there's an extra one there if you would like it. But they did have concerns because they do have a septic system there, and when I say this would be the abutter, 107, I think it is, yeah, Sanborn Lane. And they have concerns because they do have a well, they say, for their water supply, plus they have a septic system, and they're concerned about runoff. It didn't appear to me, looking at the plan, that there was going to be, I would say measurable amount of excess runoff. The driveway is there now, where the existing, you know, where the, the existing driveway is where the proposed one is. There might be a bit more pavement if you added it up, but.
The pavement would be towards the back of the house.
Yeah.
And I don't know where their well or whatever may have impacted, but.
Right. I don't know either. It just said it was 30 feet off the property line, period.
Isn't it a well? It's a well for domestic water?
I believe, that's, that's what it was.
That appears to be, but we don't have anything.
That's what the letter kind of states.
Says our septic tank and dry well are located in the rear of the house, so yeah, the well is in the front, from the front, well, 30.
Yeah.
So, we don't.
Our concern is for water trespass onto our property where our well is located. I take it that's the domestic water well?
Yeah.
I was a bit surprised, I didn't know we had too many of those in town.
I don't think so.
More than likely, our driveway would be the lower elevation than their, than their property.
But, like you say, John, too, I think, I don't know if that falls under our realm of.
I don't think so. I think that's conservation, so.
I think it's conservation, and I think if something happened down the road, it's maybe open yourself up to a civil action or something.
We'll certainly address it with him.
It's through this.
I mean, we'll certainly go see him, not going to go on his plan, by all means.
Wouldn't hurt. But, okay, those are my comments, and other than that, I don't have any issues with this. It seems pretty clear.
Okay. John?
The only question I had, you're not living there now, are you?
No.
Is anybody living there now?
Nope.
Do you know how long it's been vacant?
Yeah, probably 10 months.
10 months?
I mean, I don't, but yeah.
Okay, that was my question, and when I, when we got the letter from the neighbor, I didn't know if there was an existing problem, which is why they were trying to address it. They existed there now, if you've noticed.
The garage is under now.
Is it underneath?
Yeah, so it's much lower. Garage is underneath us, there wouldn't be an issue. I think that's why they raised that concern, because we are.
Out of garage, it's going to be at the surface.
Right, right. But we can certainly control the flow of water when we grade the driveway. It will be sensitive to any issues they have, certainly.
Those are the only questions I have.
Okay. Before we get to public comment, I'd just like to return to Glenn, now that you've had a chance to look at the plans.
Yeah, no, the, the footprint of the basic house matches the plot plan, with the exception of the screened-in porch and the connection between that.
Okay.
That's not shown on this, on this plot plan. The existing shed appears to be right on the property line, which is a violation of the zoning.
It's five foot? Five feet?
It should, it should be, it should be five feet.
But I assume that that is not a built into the ground, is that? I couldn't see it from the street, I didn't walk in.
I don't know.
Is that shed back there on?
The shed?
Movable?
Oh, okay. You maintaining that, though?
No, I think it's going to go, right? Yeah, it's gone, no.
It's gone?
We've got a three-car garage on there.
Is the shed there now?
They said, the, the existing shed was there.
Correct.
So, we haven't made, we haven't touched it.
It is there. Okay, yeah. The plot plan says it's an existing shed.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get rid of it.
They say they're going to demolish it.
Yeah, I guess that's up to the board to decide, I guess, well. Yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't have any issues with it. It meets, the proposal meets all the requirements of the zoning.
Mm-hmm.
There was no height, there's no height indicated on the plans for the height of the building. I assume it's going to be under the 35 feet. Usually the board looks at the elevation drawings with the dimension on it.
I would assume it is, what is it, two stories and a pitched roof?
Yeah, we'll be well under it. Despite this 28 feet, we'll also.
Well, if you came in over.
We'll be over 35, we'll put a delay.
We certainly, this would, this would be something that the building inspector would be looking at, I think, when you come in for your building permit, the height. And obviously, I think that would be discussed at that point then, if we're in excess of what the maximum.
Well, we can have, I think, do a dimension section for you, Glenn, absolutely.
All right.
No problem.
Okay, so at this time, I'm going to open up the public comment portion of the meeting. Is there anyone here who would like to comment? All right, sir, if you'd just stand up, I'll swear you in first, and then I'll have you identify yourself, so, and.
I'm Mr. Sidney Greenwood, and we're on the bar, 106 Sanborn.
Okay. Mr. Greenwood, can I, can I swear you in? One moment.
Oh, sure.
The testimony that you're about to give is the whole truth. The answer is I do. Thank you.
It's just a question.
What? Your address?
106.
106. Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Just a question, I'd like to see what the garage is going to be. I see the plan.
Showing the architectural renders.
I can show them the plot, plot plan, too, Glenn, that's.
Yep.
So, as you face the property, you're across the street, the driveway, yeah, the driveway will be right up here, and then it'll side load.
You see the property line as existing?
That's correct.
Yeah. I guess the existing in the driveway?
It'll be a new driveway.
Yeah, but is it the location or?
Existing driveway, it is. Nope, existing driveway, right. This is the new control pole, it's a new driveway, it's on, I've said, yeah. Yeah, it's kind of hard to see because it's super cold up here.
And the garage is here?
The garage should be on the back, yeah, so you'll drive up, and that's how you enter the garage, right?
Concerned because this is a very narrow street, surprising news of private road.
Right.
Cannot be wide enough, it may cause a problem us getting out of here. This one, I want to make sure that doesn't happen, that's all.
Well, Mr. Kalidias' property, he'll be able to back out of his garage and drive out, so, no, he has, obviously, he's probably, so he wouldn't park a vehicle on the street.
Yeah, we know that.
Yeah.
It's just, our driveway is right here.
Okay.
And this is the new driveway.
Right.
Because it is now, now we're moving it forward to the west.
Yes, that's correct. Yep.
That might be a problem, that's what, that's my concern.
For you backing out, or?
Uh-huh. Prop is going in and out, it's very narrow. That's very, very narrow. You need to go there and check it out, you see?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, we're only going to pave the driveway up to the lot line, obviously, would have no effect on the, on Sanborn Lane.
No, I understand.
Yeah, we'll certainly go look.
Yeah, yes, because what you do is we're going to make sure a problem, and we're going to make sure that it's not a problem.
Okay.
Because we've had it a pass, we went through, had it through the previous, we may have construction.
Okay.
All kind of promises were made, we didn't know, we have a lot of problems. We don't want to repeat this problem, because that's a private road, as you know.
Right.
And the property then goes to the center of the street.
Okay.
As you probably know as well, you just make sure, because as the driveway is now, it's no problem. I don't know how many feet west you're moving that driveway.
I think it's staying in the same location, sir.
He said it's moving, I don't.
The entrance looks like it's the same.
If it's, if it's the same location, it's not a problem.
It's, it's, the start of it is very close to the same location.
It is, it's in the same location, then once it gets on his lot, it has a little S curve to it.
Yeah, for the most part.
But the entrance is in the same location.
Yeah, I mean, if you don't mind, just let us know if you.
It really is pretty close.
Sure?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Greenwood. Would you?
My name is, do I have to go in?
I need to. Okay, yes, you do. So, you swear the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth? The answer is I do.
Yes. And my name is Ann Greenwood, 106 Sanborn Lane. I guess my question is, I feel like there's a lot of fast talk in here, and where we live, as my husband said, it's very narrow, and I just want to get it mapped out. We know where the driveway is now, and I think you said it's going to be moved to the west. I just want to, I just want to know and have it documented. Is it going to the west? How, the entrance is going to the west? Just so we get a clarification.
I don't think it's going to the west.
Greenwood, if you'd come up here a second. This is the existing driveway, goes from here to here. This is the new driveway, from here to here. So, the entrance is probably less than six inches further to the west than it is right now.
Six inches.
I'm guessing, I don't have a scale, but.
The proposed driveway actually falls wholly within the existing driveway.
It hasn't changed.
The entrance to the driveway is not going to the west?
No. Once it's on the property, the driveway expands.
That's a good point. The existing driveway is wider than the proposed.
And I just, I just wanted.
The existing driveway comes in here.
Looks like it's two cars wide to the entrance.
Allows you to park two cars.
Mm-hmm.
The driveway now is going to go down on the back, and this is where all, this is being transferred to, being transferred to the back of the house. So, the entrance has not changed.
The entrance from the street is staying exactly where it is, it's not moving.
Yep.
Okay. Did you find that?
Is there any further, anyone else like to comment?
Well, just want to welcome our new neighbor.
Okay, so at this time, I'll read into the record the letter from Harold and Gloria Huls, to whom it may concern, we live at 107 Sanborn Lane and will not be able to attend the public hearing concerning 105 Sanborn Lane. The proposed plan shows the driveway, driveway adjacent to our lot line. Our concern is for water trespass onto our property where our well is located. The well is about 30 feet from the lot line. It is our only source of potable water, and we are concerned about the use of ice melt so close to the well. Our septic tank and dry well are located in the rear of the house, also near the lot line. Our concern is for water runoff being directed to both of these. We are trying to avoid any possible future problems. We would appreciate the board addressing our concerns. For informational purposes, the plan shows the well to be in the rear of the existing house, but is actually in the front of the house. It is a working well. Thank you, signed Harold and Gloria Huls.
I have one more comment on that. This one again?
No, no, no.
Regarding the salt, that's a good point, I forgot to bring this up. That poor segment of Sanborn Lane is a no-salt area, because we have wells in septic. The public court knows that, the neighbors salted the area.
Okay.
Nobody salts the area. Private homes do not salt, the driveway does. Therefore, it would not be permitted for anyone to use salt on their property, period.
Okay.
Because it will, it will filter down, as we all know, it will increase. That's the no-salt area.
Okay.
So, the town doesn't even salt Sanborn Lane area?
Okay.
And the public have been very, very good about it, and, yes, it won't get, thank you.
Well, it's good, Tom.
Okay.
Well, we wouldn't salt the new driveway, anyway.
Thank you, that's good to know.
Yeah, thank you.
Any further comments? Okay, I'll close the public comment portion of the meeting. Any further discussion from the board?
No. You, you do plan on using the public, or the municipal sewer and municipal water located in front of the house?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's great that the sewer available, then. Yeah, it's great that the sewer available.
Yeah.
And what?
I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to grant the petitioner Eric Kalidias.
Well, Skalidias.
Paul Judge, right. A special permit under section 6.3, 6.3.8.1, and I believe it's B, of the zoning bylaws in order to demolish an existing dwelling on a non-conforming lot and to construct a new single-family dwelling on the property located at 105 Sanborn Lane in Redding, Mass. In accordance with the proposed single-family dwelling drawing, I think that's the way it's referenced, prepared and certified by Stephen, and here's another last name, Males.
Lester.
Melissa.
Males. 33 Buckingham Drive, Redding, Mass., which is dated April 25, 2011. Should we make reference to these? I think so, because we're going to.
Yeah, just get a, a date off of them, prepare them in a date, yeah.
And we'll also make reference to these architectural drawings.
Yep, we'll get that date. We'll add that, we'll add that dimension elevation.
This permit is subject to the following conditions. The petitioner shall submit to the building inspector a certified plot plan for the proposed construction and foundation plans prior to the issuance of a foundation permit for the work. The petitioner's final construction plans for the new structure shall be submitted to the building inspector, along with the as-built foundation plan prior to the issuance of a building permit. An as-built plans showing the completed construction shall be submitted to the building inspector immediately after the work is completed and prior to the issuance of a property concern. Anything else I need to put in this thing?
We need to discuss the shed and all.
Shed coming down.
It's, huh? It would have to be moved if it's going to stay there, and Glenn would enforce that anyway.
Okay.
I can put a statement in there.
Yeah.
We're going to remove the shed.
Yeah. Maybe we just make part of the motion that the.
Well, the new plans, new plans don't even, new plans on that don't even show the shed, do they?
They don't even show the shed.
Applicant notes existing shed will be demolished.
Or stated, the existing shed will be.
Is the screen room an issue or not?
That's reflected in the architectural drawings, but it's not on the lot.
Then we should correct that.
What's that, oh, the porch, screen porch? Not included?
I'm not, no, I'm asking the board, it's not going to be included in the plot plan. You're approving this plot plan.
Yep.
Right. Right? With this set of drawings, so.
It's been represented that it will not be built.
At this time.
So what you have listed here is the deck is going to be building, will not be enclosed, screened. The deck is adhered, is going to be built, it's just not going to be enclosed with screening.
There's two sec, I think there's two separate ones, the deck off, the family room, the little porch in the back. The octagon shaped piece will not be being built.
I know, I mean, generally, we just, when we, when the board makes a decision on the plans submitted, and if there's a variation on the plans when they go to construction, the board usually wants to revisit or revisit the application and modify it. If it's a major modification, yes, I think so. Well, I think a plan with the screened house on it and a plan without it is a major modification. If you plan, if you approve a plan and it doesn't have it, then it shouldn't, it shouldn't be built, according to town council unless they come in for. I'm just trying to bring, I mean, this is what we've been doing all along, and all of a sudden it's different tonight.
Well, we put in the existing shed to be demolished, and that's in there. So there's nothing wrong with putting an additional sentence, that the.
Well, I think it, I think it makes it clear, right.
Right. The diagonal, screened house, which is shown on the, on the, both plans will not be built at this time.
I'm just trying to make my life a little bit easier in the future.
Yeah, we run away and leave and you just. So Si, do you want to add those two provisions to the motion?
I would include in the motion that we would make a sentence that would say that the existing shed will be demolished and that the architectural drawings which were presented to the board this evening will be, will exclude or eliminate the screened and porch.
Is there a second for motion?
I'll second it.
Bob? Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Five zero zero.
Need a second plan?
I do, I unfortunately wrote on that. Bad habit of writing on everything that I didn't give it. So I'll just have one moment, I'm going to print, stamp a copy of the plan, which I'll give to you.
Okay.
And the board has fourteen days to write up the decision, and there's a twenty, twenty day period following the decision.
Fourteen days to.
Write up the twenty-one days. Twenty days.
We can file for a building permit once we receive the decision? Is that right, Mike?
You can file anytime you want, I can't issue it until, until the, like, approval of recording at the registry of deeds of the final decision. But you can file anytime you want.
Come get the stamped copy of the plan. This is going to stay in the full size?
The board needs it.
You have another copy, right?
I do.
Okay. You were all set?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Glenn, these usually get folded up and put in. I didn't think you had those nice round, what do you call them? Like sonotubes that you have in your safe in there? You see, what's that? Now, do you? Yep. Okay. Do you have the one that has a red and blue on it? Because I think you don't. On the second page, the application, no, you don't. So put that in, because that's the original. All right. Thank you.
Okay, sir, we will proceed to case eleven eleven. Which is a petition of Wade Wilworth, who seeks a special permit under section 6.3.2 and section 6.3.3.2 of the zoning bylaws in order to add a twenty-four foot by thirty-five foot two-story addition with a two-car garage under plus a third-story addition of four point seven feet by fifteen feet as per plan submitted on the property located at 26 Green Street in Redding. If there's no objection, I will dispense with the reading of the butters list, except to say that the butters were notified, as were the following. Porters selectmen, town clerk, police department, fire department, building department, assessor's office, engineering division, CPDC, conservation commission, health department, members and associate members of the zoning board of appeals, as well as the planning boards of Wakefield, Lynnfield, North Redding, Stonem, Woburn, and Wilmington. Anyone who wishes to testify on this case, I'd ask you to please stand up at this time and be sworn in. And it is, the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth, and the answer is I do. Thank you, and if you please identify yourself.
Wade Wilworth.
Okay, and the floor is yours.
On the block plan, you notice on the right-hand side, there's a small addition. That'll be on the second and third floor. It's almost a little overhang of the existing house. And on the left-hand side, the proposed garage with a sunroom and a porch in between the garage and the existing house. The reason I need the variance is because there's a twenty-foot setback, so we kept the back of the house straight across. There's also a fifteen-foot sewer easement on the left-hand side, which we did keep it at fifteen one. I think there was a garage back there at one time, but when they put that, there's a big drain pipe in there, they cut when they took the garage out. But keeping the back of the house the way it is, it allows me three parking spots on the left-hand side of the property for my garage.
And so this is, this is a special permit application? Glenn, do you have any comments?
Yeah, this is, what we, what we have, it's, the property is zone business B.
Okay.
Okay, it's a non-conforming two-family, as it exists. So we have, we have a non-conforming use, and we have a non-conforming structure on that property. So, our bylaws, section 6.3.2, we're supposed to clarify this area and make it a lot easier for everyone to understand, but, but it, but it really doesn't. So, so we've got, you've got the use that's taking place of a two-family, and we want to expand, he wants to expand, I believe it's a two-car garage?
Yes, sir.
Two-car garage under with rooms over it, you should have to look at the elevation plans of the drawings.
Business B is.
So I advertise it with, under 6.3.2 and 6.3.3.2 to try to cover everything that might pertain to this property.
Business B is typically a hotel, it's a main house.
Um, it's basically a downtown area that allows mostly business use. But even the business B residential users are not allowed. But this is non-conforming. And I'm not sure if adding all this on to it increases that non-conformity.
My only objective is to that, it's an existing two-family house. We're not changing the occupancy. So it's, it's part of the bylaws of the town, but we're not, we're not changing it from a two-family to a two-family to an existing two-family.
Glenn would, in terms of the use of the house on the property, we've talked about this before, but 6.3.6, alteration of a non-conforming single and two-family residential structure, which this is becoming on that particular property. Would that be more appropriate? It basically says the, says the same thing, but it is titled, um, non-conforming single and two-family residential structure, because it's on a B1 property, and B1 business does not allow residential.
Well, that's, it is a non-conforming two-family, but if you look under 6.3.6, it references back to 6.3.5.
Correct, which is you.
6.3.5 talks about alteration of a non-conforming one- or two-family dwelling as of a right, meaning you don't need a special permit. But it also talks about not increasing the footprint and things, so I don't think that 6.3.6 apply. 6.3.6 shoots us back to 6.3.5, and 6.3.5 doesn't apply to this situation.
Because we're altering. But the applicant is saying that we're not.
Because 6.3.5 says you can do it as of a right, which means he wouldn't even be here, all right? And if I thought that that, Wade tried to convince me of that, but, but he did.
Well, for the residential portion of the structure that he's, he's doing this, would he be actually by right putting that addition on? If he came to you right now, forget about the garage, forget about the deck that's there between the two, between the two. If he's coming into you and say, I want to, I want to put a third floor on my one- or two-family structure, I want to go basically up on the footprint, I'm not changing the footprint.
Yeah.
Is that by right, by you?
It would be if it was in a single or two-family dwelling area. So that, that's the question. Where, it's a, it's a business B zone.
Business B zone, so.
So it's, it's vague, that's why I tried to cover the whole 6.3.2 and 6.3.3.2 section. The more you read it, the more confusing it gets.
We've talked about this how many times?
Right.
It is.
No, it's confusing, yeah.
Because if you look at 6.3.3.2 and read the words literally, it says the board of appeals may grant a special permit to reconstruct, extend, alter, or change a non-conforming structure in accordance with the section only, big word, only, if it determines that such reconstruction, extension, alteration, and change does not increase the non-conforming nature of the structure or create a new non-conformity. That's, if it does that, I read that paragraph to say we can't do this.
Can't do it.
Can't do it. Under that paragraph.
I would agree with you, Si.
So that's why.
If you can't do it, then what you would have to do is apply for a variance.
Correct. Or, or.
I think that's what he's saying, I think he's, you are acknowledging that you need a variance.
That's on the garage?
No, I'm not, I'm, I'm here because the garage was denied by the building inspector.
Well, the garage's a different story, I think we got, we got two different situations on this particular piece of property. That's the way I read it.
Yeah, you have a, you have a zoning issue. You're telling me that this two-family is non-conforming.
Correct.
I say it's existing and it should be grandfathered, but that's just me.
Well, that's, that's what we're looking into. The reality of it is that we have two things on this property, we have the non-conforming structure that is a residential. The garage does not exist at present.
There was a garage there at one time.
It does not exist right now, it does not exist.
Correct.
Correct? It, it left the premises some years ago, we don't know when, but it left the premises.
Correct.
Okay. So we're talking about putting up a new structure, a new garage, that's one issue. Second issue is we have a one and two, we got a two-family residential, non-conforming structure on the property. We first have to address that, and then we're going to go back, at least in my mind, we're going to go back and address the garage. So we're going to address that person, that one, to me, first. And I'm saying that if you read it literally in the 6.3.3.2, as Si is mentioning, I'm not sure that we can do it, but if we look at the 6.3.5 aspect of it, if it, if you had come in and it was a conforming, um, one- or two-family structure, you would, as by right, be able to put it up. But 6.3.6 says that if this were the situation, it was conforming, but in this case it's not conforming, then in Glenn's mind, if we can do that, that's what we're going to do. Or the board has the right to give that special permit under 6.3.6, so that's the only reason I'm going to 6.3.6. Because we talked about this when town council was, with planning commission, was talking about changing all the 6.3 articles, and we weren't in favor, but they were. So we have to work with it, so that's the only way I can see to work with it in a particular situation like this.
One other thing, John, is that if you drive by that location, this construction is already underway.
Yes, on the existing house.
Well underway, so you must be doing that under.
I have a building permit.
Under 6.3.5.
I have a building permit because I didn't, and the reasons Glenn issued, I believe, the building permit is because I didn't change the existing footprint of the structure.
Like we said, we could go vertically up.
Right, okay.
So he recognizes.
When you did that, you were in essence actuating the 6.3.5 aspect of the, because otherwise he wouldn't have been even able to start this until it came before the board.
Correct.
So you don't have a building permit, you can't stop, you would have got a cease and desist, and Glenn would have had to issue it. So again, I come back to the same point, we get the 6.3.5, if it were a conforming issue, Glenn would have released you and said, here's your building permit, go ahead. But now we have to correct that because it's non-conforming, this is a non-conforming use on that particular lot. So we're just saying that Glenn, Glenn can do what he, what he wants to do, because he's exercising the 6.3.5, which is mentioned in the 6.3.6. And we're going to give you that, or you're going to apply for that, and the board decides in the affirmative, they're going to grant you that under 6.3.6, which as Si and all the rest of us have talked about in the past, not being able to do technically under 6.3.3 or 6.3.2, 6.3.3.2, as we discussed so many times, because it says basically you should get a variance to do this.
Well, it goes back to your earlier comment, whereas none of the, I, as the owner of the property, was never notified that this property address, the whole area was going to be changed from residential to business. There's a lot of single-family homes, I mean, they can't even come in and get a building permit without going for a variance, because it's non-conforming?
Well, technically you were notified by the planning board, because they had CPDC, before they can do any of this and move forward, they have to do a.
I don't think so.
Review process in public.
Public hearing.
Forum, to take in any input that they have and to allow anybody to speak, they have to do that.
I've gotten, I've gotten letters for the new project from the Atlantic, I've gotten letters for signs. I never got a letter from the town to change the use of my property or the street in that manner. So essentially, there's a lot of homeowners on Green Street in that area, that the area's been changed from what it was to business, without anyone knowing about it.
Well, that's, that's another question that I think could impact this, but I don't think we really want to address that. What is the impact of, if that's included in the new smart zoning, I don't know where that leaves all this.
I'm not sure that the zone has changed in that area. This, this is an old home that was here prior, prior to zoning.
And it always was, B1, right.
So I don't, I don't think, I don't think the zoning's ever changed, that I'm, that I'm aware of.
Well, the only overlay is the overlay for the smart zoning.
Right.
And I don't know where that impacts this. Because I haven't even seen it.
I have a question, and I think maybe Glenn could at least confirm it. In regards to setbacks now in business B.
Yep.
No front setback is required, is it?
No.
No side yard setback is required.
Just the rear.
Just a rear setback of 20 feet is required, is that correct? Yeah, that's the way I read it, too. My next question is, I see a deck on your plot plan at the rear of the house.
That's existing, yes.
Pardon?
That's the existing second means of egress right now.
That's there now?
Yes, sir.
But yet you're, let's see, looking at your plans, I didn't see it. Existing remains of the house, it just shows a bulkhead back there. And that's what I was confused, is that deck there or isn't it?
It is there.
And if it is there, was a building permit and a permit issued for that? Because that's six and a half feet from the rear property line.
That was there on the bottom. The existing, the existing house-
Yeah.
On page six.
Oh, okay.
So if you look at page six, you'll see the basement floor, which is a few steps from the second floor is the actual deck and stairway.
Yeah, we don't. That's what I say, all I saw was the existing remains, sheet one here, and it shows a bulkhead back there. Shows no deck. Granted, when I went down and looked at the property, I stopped in front and looked. I didn't go around back or anything.
No, but if you look at sheet one, you see the post just beyond the bulkhead?
Yep.
Those are posts for the deck above.
Yeah, yeah. So it's for another, so it's like a second-story deck?
The second floor of egress.
Ah, okay.
Right, it's a deck above those posts.
Okay, okay, that explains it. Very good. And that has been there a while. I guess the question was, was a permit filled for that?
If you look at sheet three on the drawings, you'll see the deck.
Ah, okay. Okay, that explains it.
See, I did the same thing as you did. I looked at the assessors card for where a deck was put on or a staircase and a second deck for second means of egress. I couldn't find it.
Yeah, that was a question I had.
So I said the same thing to myself. Is this, was this put on legally and when was it put on?
I think it was about 18 years. So it was put on before that.
Yeah, but the assessors, the assessors cards go back to 1966, is it?
Mm-hmm.
And it's not listed anyplace. So all of that stuff usually listed on the card when it's converted over. And technically, it really didn't show when the, 67 it went back to. And it really didn't show where the house was converted from a single family to a two-family, unless it was done at the time that the house was built back in the turn of the century, I assume. I didn't find a date on it.
Year built, it says. I'm looking at the assessments thing here. I pulled it off, the line 1920.
1920, okay. I don't know, did it say single family or two-family?
I don't see any note here, John. Maybe you can read these faster than I can. Does it say single?
Well, U.S. Code was 104. I don't know what 104 is. If that was a single or a two-family.
104 is one family or two families?
Say that again? Oh, I don't know.
There's assessors.
Code.
Code. So we'd have to go back and check that. But I mean, it's there. I think 104 is a single family.
I don't know, couldn't tell you.
Either way, I had the same concern that you did.
Yeah.
And when I went back and I looked at it, that's why I referred to looking at that as two different aspects on the same lot. And I said, you know, it certainly appears that we're going to need a variance for the garage because it's only 15, 15 and a half feet.
From the rear, yeah.
And that's on the, hit that arrow, I can never chase that arrow. On the left side of the drawing. On the right side, where the garage meets up with the back of the thing. I think it's less than 15 feet. But I know why that's done. That's done so that they can connect.
Right.
But right now-
I would agree. It looks like it on plan it would be.
Right. But it looks like now, if we follow what we have for a B1 property, it has to be 20 feet from the rear lot line because that's the only dimensional control that a B1 zoning area would have. So I don't know how we can move forward on a special permit to give that. Whether the deck was there or not, I'm not convinced of that aspect of it. Not that I don't think that this would be a legitimate proposal. I just don't see how we can get around the variance aspect of it.
Well, and maybe Glenn can. This is, again, because this is in a business B with a residential use, there's another provision that a single or two-family dwelling, by special permit, you can maintain that existing, existing nonconforming setback. But that's, usually we address that in a single, in a residential district.
Right. But this is a, this lot is zoned B1, has always been zoned B1. So this is not a residential lot that we're talking about. And most of the special permit was all utilized for residential lots. It's only a few cases where the use aspect of it, it's into it.
So what is a special permit? Do you have a special permit now?
No.
For the construction you're doing?
I was able to get a regular permit.
Building permit.
Building permit.
Because we weren't increasing the footprint of the nonconforming structure, which is a single or two-family dwelling. But also now, there's another provision that allows you to take a single or two-family dwelling and extend it along that same line.
Where is that?
That's what I'm trying to find.
Originally, I think, looking for 632 again.
632. That's nonconforming uses. We're talking about, we're talking about-
Nonconforming use, okay.
Nonconforming structure.
Because that allows for an extension. But this is for the nonconforming structure. This would be for the house alone. This would not be for the garage.
Right. Let's see what that section is changing the use. I think, is it 636 in the event?
Well, the 636 I'm looking at as part of.
They allow such extension, which determines that the proposed extension, alteration, and change will not be substantially. That's 636.
I think.
636. 636 would allow you to, that talks about alteration of a nonconforming single or two-family residential structure. That's what we, it's a residential structure, but it's in a business zone, zone district.
But we're not changing the use at all. That's-
No.
It's staying the same.
No, but, but we're, so are we?
What?
Are we expanding the, I don't think we're expanding the use. The use is the same. It's a two-family to two-family. We're expanding the size of the structure.
Expanding the structure.
So I think this where you can determine if it's any more detrimental to enable it.
You're not expanding the use.
No.
No, you're expanding the structure.
Yeah.
So I think the board can do that by special permit under 636.
What? I'm looking at this now, and it looks like the, to me, the only issue is the rear setback. And to me, there's no new nonconformity. The existing building, including the deck, assuming the deck is considered part of the building now, is six and a half feet from the rear property line. And the proposed addition is 15 and a half feet. Now, even if the deck wasn't there, they've just extended the rear of that, the dwelling. And it's 15 and a half feet still. And as John says, it looks to me like at the corner where it met the house, that might even be 15 four or 15 three or something. To me, they haven't increased that nonconformity at the rear.
But what I'm trying to wrap my mind around was, what is the primary zone here? The primary zone is B1.
Business.
Business B. Business B.
So if we're building a structure in a business B1 zone, we need to comply with the requirements of the B1 zone. And the B1 zone says you must be 15, you must be 20 feet from the rear lot line. The nonconforming structure, which is the one and two, in this case, a two-family structure, that's secondary to the primary zone. And it has been for, even when you bought the property 18 years ago, it was a B1 zone.
So by not making that more nonconforming, that doesn't apply here because of the business district?
It would apply any district, to me. It would be, if something is nonconforming and you add an addition to it or expand on it or something, it's still in that same district, whether it be residential, S15, S20, business B. It's still the same thing you're doing. You're expanding upon it, and that's what we're doing here. It's just the use should not changing. It's a nonconforming use we all agree on. And I'm looking, it's-
So the question is, are you expanding the nonconforming?
I'm just wondering here, if 6332 may apply, which is nonconforming structure. And the Board of Appeals may grant a special permit to reconstruct, extend, alter, or change a nonconforming structure in accordance with this section if it determines that such restoration, extension, et cetera, does not increase the nonconforming nature of the structure or create a new nonconformity and is substantially, is not substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming structure to the neighborhood. Period. It's basically, it's similar to what's required for 638 1B. But that's specifically for nonconforming structures.
The part, the difficulty that I'm having, is the section that says, "Or create a new nonconformity."
But what's the new nonconformity?
The 20-foot setback from the B1 zone of the garage area.
But it already doesn't meet the 20-foot setback.
It's a new structure. It doesn't, does not, the new structure that's being proposed here does not exist right now. The house is what exists.
It's an extension.
Well, see, I can't, I can't get myself around the extension because you're extending the line of the house into the B1, which is the primary zone. The primary one, primary zone was the B1.
Yeah. Why would that make any difference if it's a B1 or if it were an S20 or an S15? If that setback was-
Because the primary, the primary zone here is for B1. It's not for a residential property. It wasn't for a one- or two-family residential house.
Okay, but he's grandfathered. Well, we all recognize the fact that he's, it's legal nonconforming use.
I'll go along with it.
It's a legal nonconforming use, I think.
I'll go along with it.
Yeah. I agree. I wrestle with this a little bit, whether a variance is required, et cetera. But the more I read into it, and if it's accepted, he's not increasing the nonconformity there. I was more concerned, I don't like that on the, you might say, on the easterly side, going from 2.8 existing setback to a 2.4. But in a business B, you can have zero. And so, you know, I don't like it, but it's legal. Si, did you have a question?
Oh, really, comment? I mean, the reason you pushed it back was to get yourself a third parking period, right?
A third parking and then keep the line straight.
Right. But I mean, if you went to two parking spaces, you could easily comply with the 20 feet.
Yes. I could pull it forward, but, I mean, a third spot off Street Parkings. I mean, you can't park on Green Street without a sticker. I have a guest at my house during the day. They got a parking ticket.
Do you happen to know what the distances on that, looking at this, the right hand? It's 15 five over on the left-hand side?
Yeah.
But from the 2.4 to the back, you know the distances?
I would say just by the way that building goes at a little bit of an angle, I would say it might be 15 feet. I'd say 14 and a half to 15 feet plus a mile.
Yeah, I mean, it looks shorter.
Just by the angle of the building.
Right, I, it looks like it's a bit skewed. It looks like it's a bit skewed. It's not parallel with that rear building line.
John, additional questions, comments?
No, no.
I know. I don't, I think we've discussed it, and as I say, I, other than that, there was a concern was the side yard, but can't do anything about that. And I don't think personally, he's creating a new nonconformity on that. So I-
I can look at both with two different sets of eyes, okay? I can understand where John's going.
I think, to me, he meets the requirements of 6332 for a special permit.
I think you view the garage as a new-
I do.
Structure.
But I was advertising that.
I do.
To an existing structure. It's a brand-new thing.
I do.
Okay? And therefore, it's not compliant. But I can also rationalize the way Bob's going at it and saying, okay, I don't think it does any harm to do it, to accept it that way.
I know. I don't know how the building inspector, if something's connected to an existing structure, is that considered an addition? But if it were separated by two feet, that would be a new structure then, would it not? See, I'm looking at this as an extension.
It is, this is an addition.
It's an addition, right. That's the way I'm looking at it.
In most districts, you can't have two buildings on one lot.
Right.
Unless it was an accessory building.
There you go.
So a garage by itself.
So they have to be connected or wouldn't be allowed, yeah.
Correct.
It's an addition.
John, any more questions, comments?
No, so the question, John, you already said that you're saying that it should be 20-foot setback for this new building. And Bob is, I mean, I look at it as an extension myself and if it's not making it any more nonconforming. I don't know if there's a difference between business and residential.
Basically, that's, that's the way I would feel, too, except that I think 6322 allows you to do a special permit because the nonconformity's not being increased. My only question is, I was having a little problem with the B, business B versus a residential.
Right.
District. I mean, Wade and I, we went over this for several days, trying to figure out how to attack it.
Well, let's open this to public comment at this time. And if anybody wants to comment on this? So we will close the public comment, period. And any further discussion from the board? Anyone like to venture a motion?
I always seem to be the most adamant here about stating my position, so it looks like it's up to me to make the motion. I'll make a motion. Let's see here. That the Board of Appeals grant a special permit to the applicant Wade Willworth under section 6.3.3.2 of the zoning bylaws. Willworth under section 6.3.3.2 of the zoning bylaws in order to add a 24-foot by 35.5-foot two-story addition with two-car garage under, plus a third-story addition, 4.7 feet by 15 feet, as shown on the plot plan, prepared for the property, 26 Green Street, prepared by Edward J. Farrell, 110 Professional Landscape or 110 Wind Street, Woburn, Mass., and dated 5/4/11, May 4, 2011. And in general conformance with the architectural plans submitted with the application that shows the two additions, so noted, those, let's see, prepared by Phoenix Collaborative Architects and dated May 4, 2011, consisting of five sheets, number one through five. With the conditions that the applicant submit to the Building Inspector foundation plans of the proposed additions prior to the issuance of a foundation permit, and that, number two, that the applicant submits building plans to the Building Inspector along with an as-built foundation plan prior to the issuance of a building permit, and number three, that the applicant submit to the Building Inspector as-built finished drawings of the, or as-built completed drawings of the proposed additions prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit.
One question, sir.
Yes.
There's the proposed addition on the left and then I call it an overhang, but an addition on the right was the second and third floor?
Yes.
I don't, I thought I described this third floor, I just wanted to clarify.
Things you do said second, third, it's for second and third floor, that addition.
Okay, okay.
They have just said one, sir.
I'll amend it, yeah, well, it's, okay, under and third-story addition.
Second.
Okay. Yeah, I'll amend that by saying the four-foot seven-by-five fifteen-foot addition is for, proposed for the second and third-story addition.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Did you, you made a reference to page six. Did you, did you want to submit a page six with these drawings? We only have five.
Six was an existing plan, but I, I've had so many plans, I don't know.
I think we got the plot plan and we got the...
Would you be amenable to amend your original motion to include that the second floor of the proposed garage area would, would never be converted to residential use?
The proposed second floor of the what?
Garage.
The garage area.
Which is on the plans, but how many times have we seen this happen, that it becomes two, now we have a three, now we have three residents on the property instead of two?
Right, yeah.
So I'm thinking that's, being a special permit, we could easily...
Yeah, I have no problems. I don't know what the applicant is...
That's storage on the plan.
Storage.
Storage on the plan.
Oh, it does?
Yep.
Okay. There's storage, maybe a family room, but that's a lot.
Okay. I'll amend it that, yeah, that right now, the Board sees it as noted as storage, and there shall be no additional residential use of that second-floor area above the garage, proposed garage.
Okay.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed?
And the applicant does know that that means it's approved.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
So the Board has 14 days to write a decision, and there's a appeal period following that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Just stamp these.
I'll write that one up, Jeff.
Okay. Okay, thank you for your patience. We're now ready for case 1112, which is the petition of Ryan Kylie, who seeks a special permit under section 6.3.3 and 6.3.3.2 of the zoning bylaws in order to demolish an attached non-conforming garage and to construct a larger addition that is also non-conforming with a proposed side yard setback of 7.4 feet on the property located at 326 Lowell Street in Redding. There's no objection, I will dispense with the reading of the butters list, except to say that butters were notified, as were the following: Board of Selectmen, Town Clerk, Police Department, Fire Department, Building Department, Assessor's Office, Engineering Division, CPDC, Conservation Commission, Health Department, members and associate members of the Board of Appeals, as well as the planning departments of Wakefield, Lanefield, North Redding, Stonem, Woburn, and Wilmington. Anyone who wishes to testify on this matter, please stand up and we will swear you in. And it is, the testimony you're about to give you swear will be the whole truth. The answer is I do.
I do.
Thank you. And if you please identify yourself, and the floor is yours.
For the record, Sean Rier, Law Firm of Mon and Mon, 235 Michonne Road in Woburn. Here with, here before you, on behalf of the petitioner, Ryan Kylie, who is here with me tonight, owner of the property at 326 Lowell Street in Redding. Also have with me the site contractor Glenn Matrono of Matrono Construction. The property is located, a single-family, 15 zoning district, and also the Aquifer Protection District. It's currently a single-family residence. It's a non-conforming structure, and the S-15 zoning district with respect to the side yard setback. Existing structure is 7.4 feet from the side lot line, according to the required S-15. The special permit is sought pursuant to 6.3.3.2 of the writing zoning bylaws, an alteration of a non-conforming, of an existing non-conforming structure. Ryan is seeking to construct an addition to his house. It's currently a one-car garage, which would be converted to a first-floor master bedroom and bath with a full basement below and a second-floor space as well. The addition would maintain the current non-conformity as to the side setback of 7.4 feet. Does not create a new non-conformity. It's not an extension of the non-conformity. The existing seven-foot setback will be maintained throughout the whole addition. Just a quick note on the Aquifer Protection District. The current impervious surface on the property, 11.3 percent, addition would increase that impervious surface to approximately 13.2 percent, which is still below the 15 percent required by the bylaw. So the petitioner respectfully requests the Board to issue a special permit allowing construction of the addition. Be happy to answer any questions. Also, the site contractor here, to answer any questions you might have as well.
Okay, thank you. Glenn, do you have any comments?
No, just, we just went through it. This is a typical 6322, 6332 permit. The existing structure is non-conforming, it's 7.4 on the left-hand side, and the proposed construction will be 7.4 on the same left-hand side.
Si, questions, comments?
No, I have no problem with whatsoever.
John?
The advertisement shows the garage to construct a larger addition that is non-conforming. Are we talking about extending what would have been the garage back further?
The addition does extend back further than the current structure.
But it's not referenced here on the certified plot plan.
Yes, it is.
I believe it is. I think you have an existing plot plan, you also have a proposed.
I thought I looked at it first, twice. Where is the other one?
It does extend about 10 feet further back to the rear of the property, which is, you can see there's ample room there.
Right.
Okay. Still a question ahead?
No, this looks pretty straightforward, a non-conforming lot, they're not increasing any non-conformity, and certainly I think the addition will fit with the house and with the neighborhood. And I don't see any increase in impervious to the lot, or, excuse me, there is an increase in impervious, but I don't see it exceeding the maximum allowed.
Exceeding the 15, yeah, right.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm fine with it.
John, questions, comments?
No, the same as the other members. Seems pretty straightforward.
Okay. Are there any members of the public who, or anyone else here who wishes to comment on this? Seeing none, I will open and then close the public comment period. Any further discussion from the board? No? I agree, this appears pretty straightforward to me. I'll entertain a motion.
John, you want to write one? You want me to write one?
I'll write it.
Okay.
Make a motion to grant to the petitioner, petitioner Ryan Kylie, special permit under section 6.3.3.2 of the zoning bylaws in order to demolish an attached non-conforming garage and to construct a larger addition that is also non-conforming with the proposed side yard setback of 7.4 on the property located at 326 Lowell Street, Redding, Mass., as shown on the certified plot plan prepared by...
You want the one with the...
It shows it, yeah. Sullivan Engineering Group, 22 Mount Vernon Road, Oxford, Mass., 01921, dated 11/5/10. Plot plan shows, is that 26 feet, the addition on the side? 26 feet by 18.8, proposed addition. With no additional non-conforming requirements. Special permit is conditioned upon the following: petitioner shall submit to the Building Inspector a certified plot plan of the proposed construction and proposed foundation plans prior to the issuance of a foundation permit for the work. Two, the petitioner's final construction plans for the new structure shall be submitted to the Building Inspector with the as-built foundation plan prior to the issuance of a building permit, and as-built plans showing the completed constructions shall be submitted to the Building Inspector immediately after the work is completed and prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit.
Do you want to reference the...
All the, oh, yeah.
War plans?
Also submitted by the petitioner, three, four architectural designs showing the addition prepared by Diane Myers, Architectural Services, 159 Wakefield Street, Redding, Mass. I do not see a date.
I agree.
No date reference on the architectural plans?
Just as January 2011.
Oh, way down, okay.
Way down there, January 2011.
January 2011.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Oops. Could I suggest that maybe we put in that this will be a three-story addition, a basement, a full basement, plus two-story on top? If you didn't refer to that, and it's in the plan, but it's not, it's in the diagram. It's in the plans, architectural plans, but it's not in the motion.
And the, instead of a construction, instead of a larger foot, three-story addition?
Well, it's two-story and a full basement.
Okay. Can I start the two-story, a full basement addition?
26 by 18, as you had mentioned. I'll second the amendment.
The amendment? All those in favor? 500. That is approved. One moment, I'll stamp some plans for you to take with you.
Please, Mr. Jones, sir. I think I have another set. We've just been stamping the first page of the architectural...
They're stapled together anyways, right?
Just so they're in the file, yeah, and they're stamped, yeah.
So the Board has 14 days to write the decision, and a 20-day appeal period follows thereafter.
Very much.
You're all set, thank you. And John, you're going to write this one up for us?
No, Marv, read this.
Marv, read this, okay, great. So next item on our agenda is the board reorganization. Thank you.
Oh, yes. We have. Okay, you're off. Okay. Good night.
Good night, good night.
You have a vacation?
Yes.
So we have lost our former trusted leader.
He's being presented with a, by the, a mission certificate that would have been selected to me.
No.
Nice.
On Monday? Tuesday.
Tuesday. So he's going to be at the selectment meeting.
If, if we...
Size to come. Yeah, he's been invited, yeah. Very nice.
It's about five years.
What's the timeframe on that?
I think beyond, five years will be on.
No, the time of the meeting. Is it about, is it on the agenda yet?
It starts at seven.
When would they?
Is he on the agenda?
It would be on the...
It would be on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
You can get it online. You can get everything online.
Of course.
Outstanding.
What is the CVV meeting? That email that you sent out, I just got the first, the second part of the CVV. Bring your car if you don't want it anymore.
Yeah, I didn't even see that. I was asked what the car thing was.
Oh, the YCC.
I'm sorry, the YCC.
Oh, the correction. Vehicle, I had somebody actually send me an email. Vehicle Day is, it's in the library parking lot, and they bring in fire engines and the police wagon and the cars and the big DPW trucks, and all the kids, and the grown-up kids come, and they can climb in them and look at them and ask questions. It's, kids love it. Big kids love it.
Big kids love it too?
And you have the time now.
Will the two Zambonis be there?
I don't think the Zambonis.
I took pictures of both of them.
You took pictures?
So, back to reorganization.
Yes.
Is there anyone who would like the chair, or...
Well, we usually, the vice chair usually steps up to the chair. So the first question would be, what is the feeling of the vice chair at this point stepping up to the chair?
I am happy to do so. I will say, however, if somebody would like to be the chair, Si is not particularly looking in that direction, but I'd also be happy to step back if somebody is anxious to be the chair.
Really wants it.
No, I'm happy, I'm happy to do it.
Yep.
But I also don't want to...
I think Si would make a great chair.
Yes.
So you would be, say that again?
He stays as a vice chair, and Si would be the chair.
Well, Si's not a full member yet.
How come?
Because somebody will do it.
How come?
That's right.
He can be a full member next week.
Well, if the selectment is meeting in that direction this coming Tuesday, Bud Si would have to be voted a full member first.
Oh, I just, no, I just, with Clark leaving, I just assumed that you would have...
Hey, I think he missed the vote on this.
Moved up.
You would have assumed what?
That you...
He might be able to arrange it, but he couldn't.
Put in for Clarks, as you'd be the next in line.
Well, I thought, I like your side here, but the vice chair usually steps up, becomes a chair.
Well, it has been...
It's traditionally what it's been, yeah.
Are you worried about work at all? Because sometimes you don't know that you can meet him.
I actually have, as of two weeks ago, a new job, which will be much more regular hours.
Ooh. No excuses.
That should work out in that regard.
And obviously, if you can't, the vice chair steps up, and if the vice chair can't do it, somebody steps up.
Somebody else will step up.
Like I said, I'm happy to do it. I didn't know if anybody was anxious to do it.
Can we all unanimously agree that we would like to have Jeff serve as...
Do we have to have a motion?
Motion.
I think we do. I think we have to have a motion made, nomination of, motion, yeah.
I think the motion to nominate, uh, to be the chairman of zoning board within a year.
I would second that.
Second. All those in favor?
In common, all those in favor?
All for yourself.
I'll stand.
Well, you're raising your hand, meaning you're accepting it too.
Oh, okay, well, then I'll accept.
That's it. Very good. Jeff accepts.
So we need a vice chair.
Do we need to vote a vice chair at the same time then?
I think we do, yeah.
Yeah.
Because something should happen to the chair.
Right.
At next meeting, we need to have a vice chair to be present.
But Jeffrey's stepping in tonight.
I'm supposed to contact the town manager to convert to being a regular member?
Yes, when you re-upped your membership, at that time, you could have requested to become a full member, you know?
Clark should have told you. We'll blame Clark.
I think it's...
The two letters?
Clark's home and his living room watching this.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Probably I should have signed something when you moved, but you can see Paula, Paula, right?
Yes.
Yeah, she'll swear you in.
So in the meantime, we have to have a vice chair, and we leave... One of us three?
Probably would have to be one of us three.
Because Kristen is an associate member as well.
One of the three members here tonight, yeah.
Okay.
I have a tough, I know it sounds wrong on TV, I can't say, but I don't know if I can make that commitment.
Okay, fair enough.
I have played the role of vice chair and chair a number of times. Robert has been chair. Have you been a vice chair too?
Yes.
Okay.
I was vice chair before I was chair for two years, yeah.
Would you like the vice chair?
I would, I would be glad to take vice chair.
I'll nominate Robert Redfern as vice chair.
I'll second that motion also.
All those in favor?
I accept.
Okay.
Very good. And then, Si, are we amending the requirement that, or condition that Si filed the necessary paperwork to become a full member of the zoning board?
I think, Maureen, that the board could go on record in the minutes, that the board is recommending that Si be moved to a position of full member.
Yes, but that in minutes.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yep.
So it more or less is to support...
More support.
Your...
Support is...
Couldn't we just do that at next Tuesday's meeting?
Well, that would be, that would be the intent. If Si can get in there, like tomorrow, we'll, we'll open tomorrow. Monday?
Monday, but I don't think it happens that quickly.
Well, we don't even know if they're going to meet next Tuesday on appointments, do we?
Well, they might be meeting, but see, now there's this board that does the...
Overview.
It's, there's a committee that does the...
Right, exactly. I forgot about that.
...know the possible needs.
Then even more reason why it should get into the minutes, that the board is standing behind the request that Si be moved to a position of full member.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everyone's comfortable with that? I'm definitely on board with that.
Sure, yes.
I can't see why they couldn't just do it, but...
Well, the other four members, because Si can't vote, but the other four members would recommend that.
Yeah, that way certainly makes it a lot easier when somebody applies soon, hopefully soon.
That they come in as the associate.
Yeah, that they would come in as an associate.
Well, I remember when I, when I moved over, Susan Miller had left, and I just assumed that Peter, at that time, was going to move up, but I talked to Maureen, and he had no interest. So I, that's what I put my name in.
And after that, the national speech that Jeffrey gave, we probably will have people clamoring to...
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Delivered flawlessly.
Okay.
Should we move on to the minutes?
The minutes?
Uh, I'm going to take a moment to look at the minutes of May 19th, which three out of the five of us were not present for, so...
Once again, I'd like to request that the minutes, when they come to me, have all the corrections just in one email to me, instead of separate emails. You know, like Clark, I would get the final draft from Clark, which would have all the corrections in it. And if that can be done, that, that works well, as opposed to many different ones.
So Clark must have taken all our comments and put them into one document.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, they were all, yes.
I didn't know that.
That works really well.
I will take that on.
Okay.
It just makes it easier and make sure that they're all in there and...
I'm sure it does, but it takes some time then on the chairman's part to do that.
A tiny bit.
Pardon?
A tiny bit of time.
Okay.
I see comments that I had have been incorporated into the final draft of May 19th. I have no further additions to the May 19th final draft.
Si?
Final of May, vote.
Okay. Do we have, now neither myself nor John nor John were present for that meeting, so it's really just the two of you.
So we're just going to have two voting, huh? Well, I'll make a motion then, Si, that we approve the minutes of, the final draft of the minutes of May 19, 2011, as written.
I guess I have a second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Zero zero.
Good thing you voted the third.
Zero three, I guess, yeah.
Okay, if everyone will take one moment to look at the minutes of June 2nd.
One comment there that's been taken here.
Anybody? Questions, comments, corrections?
Before the... I'm comfortable with the final draft.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion. To the minutes of June 2nd.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, and it will be Si, myself, Rob, Bob, and John Miles voting. All those in favor? Opposed? The four zero one. And I don't believe that we have any other business.
That covers it for tonight.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Five zero zero.
Okay, very good, Jim.